Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Technical difficulties, hang on. That would have been fun to watch.
Yes, it would.
Good evening, thank you, welcome again. Natty, if you would, do the roll call, please.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
A Samurai?
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up will be the agenda approval adjustments announcements and correspondence, and first up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Lauren, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is the announcements. May 9th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there will be a subcommittee on policy meeting. Also, May 9th at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. May 16th at 5:00 PM, school board listening session. Also, May 16th at 5:30, a school board work session. On May 23rd, we'll have a regular school board meeting. And May 29th is Memorial Day, Monday, there'll be no school. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Next up, communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. You didn't just hear because you have to be. I don't see anybody, so we'll move on past that. Consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. If I can get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is acknowledgement of contributions, and if I could get a motion in a second, then I'll read it and open it for discussion.
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive, for the benefits of the district, bequests, donations, or gifts for any purpose, any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, it be resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $13,592. Detailed background, the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. There's an anonymous donation for $171. Doug and Pat Johnson, $2,000. Mr. and Mrs. William Keether, $5,000. Michael School, $500. Robert Nygaard, $20. Jack and Dee Goss, $25. Karen and Steve Wolgemat, Wolgemat, $1,000. Malcolm Watson, $1,000. Kathleen Kane, $500. Janet Vaughn, $200. Pamela Sigerson, $200. Carmodyogee, $200. Clem Culverston, $100. Nicole Hallaby, $100. Robert U., $100. Ann Farnum, $100. Nancy Hornibrook, $100. Catherine McAvoy, $100. Ann O'Neal, Ann O'Neal, $100. Roger and Karen Sidloski, $100. Gerald Writing, $75. Gerald Bolt, $50. Diane Scully, $100. Betty Justin, $100. Janet Larson, $100. William Struff, $500. Laura Martenson, $25. Kathleen Anderson, $25. Connie Rose Swachhammer, $50. Marissa Schneider, $100. Robin Rice, $50. Heather Cop, $50. Pamela Myers, $50. Joy Bayless, $50. Arian Strom, $20. Marcia Bergman, $20. James Philippi, $20. Erica Trotman, $40. Carl Lightbody, $40. Jean Richards, $100. Mary Williams, $11. Angela Knoll, $20. Value and Kind, donations of books to Valley View Elementary by Colleen Hermel for student needs estimated value of $150. Donation of office supplies to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Anonymous for student needs estimated value of $150. Donation of an art easel to ECSE by Tom Smitnik for student needs estimated value of $50. Total fiscal year 2016-2017 monetary contributions to date, $71,434.54. Discussion.
Pretty great.
It's the one time you guys like to listen to me ramble on these lists of scholarship stuff, so. Hearing no discussion, Natty, if you would, roll call, please.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much to everyone that made their contributions. Discussions, reports, information items, reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And Natty, we'll start with you tonight.
It's not Holla this time, she'll be happy. Sorry, I have to dig for it here on my phone, I'm not just texting during the meeting. Had a fun week, so again, spring sports starting up, got to attend a baseball game over at Columbia Academy, and then a few varsity baseball games here, we've had a lot of home games. I also did the Phase 3 training from the Minnesota School Board Association, riveting stuff there. We attended, or a lot of us, I think, attended the Teacher of the Year Celebration in honor of our Teacher of the Year, which was really fabulous to see, all the people who were there to encourage her and all the great teachers that supported her. And we also had a work session last week.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a nice meeting with Member Palmer. I also attended Fine Arts Night over at Highland Elementary, which was fabulous. I had the opportunity to go watch our Columbia Academy Unified Sports for Special Olympics last Friday in St. Paul participate. They did really well, all of the athletes, it was really fun to watch. Was going to go to the Special Advisory Council meeting, but that was canceled, and we'll regroup next year and move forward, and that's it.
Thank you. Lauren?
I was at the listening session last week, as well as the work session. I met with Superintendent Kelly for some additional information regarding staffing. Thank you for your time during that meeting. I also attended the Metro EXU Annual Meeting, which is the Educational Cooperative Servicing Unit, which reduces costs through collaborations of area districts. I went to Highland Fine Arts Night as well, and those students and their teachers did a fantastic job. I was able to attend the High School Musical last weekend. That was another fantastic performance by all of those students, and they have three more shows, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, all at 7:00 PM coming up. And then I attended the synchronized swimming meet as well, and it was a fantastic job by those ladies today.
Okay, thank you. I attended the chair meeting last week prior to the listening session, which I was also a part of, will report on, report out on later in the meeting. I was at the work session. I also attended the Teacher of the Year Celebration. I have the honor of being able to be part of the principal interviews, initial principal interviews, and there was just a host of talent that day. The Highland Fine Arts Festival, baseball game Friday night, the high school game. And I also attended the play maybe three times, with three to go, but I will echo Lauren, that play, the kids, and they always are, but they're once again, they're doing a phenomenal job, and we'd love to see people come out. I watched as they performed each night, and with the crowds and the enthusiasm, I mean, obviously, it's theater and that's what they do, but they, there's so much play up to the reaction of the crowd, and the more people that are able to attend and present for the kids, right? Okay, yeah, yeah. It's just, it's a ton of fun, and it's actually, it's one of those plays that I'm looking forward to going to see it again, so. If you have the opportunity, please, please come to see the kids, as Lauren said, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 7:00 PM. I will be attending the mayor's breakfast, and that is...
May 10th.
May 10th.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that the district has a table there, so as board members, we've been invited, and if you guys can make sure that either a yes or a no, so they can figure out who else they might have come, and so I'll maybe check with Don on that one, if you would. And I believe that concludes my report, which would lead us to the superintendent's report, which I presume you have one.
Mr. Chair and members, indeed I do. I also attended the 2017 Teacher of the Year Reception, and I would just like to say one more time, congratulations to Erin Edwison Stern. She's the consummate professional, and she provides such a wonderful model for others to emulate, so congratulations to her once again. I attended the Alice Lentz fundraising benefit, and the high school choir performed there, they did a wonderful job, it was nice of them to donate their time. And thank you to all the people that came out to support the Lentz family at this stressful time. As was mentioned earlier, the district's in the process of selecting a new principal for Valley View Elementary. The first rounds of interviews were completed this last week, and we're doing second rounds this week, and people are invited to the meet and greet, which is Thursday night. It'll be in this room, and it goes from 6:30 to 7:30. The Highland Fine Arts Night was phenomenal, that's all I can say. Had an opportunity to see some of you there, there were, it was the biggest night they thought they'd had. I talked to Principal DeWitt, they thought that they served over 400 meals that night. The choirs were phenomenal, so hats off to the choir director and the 5th grade band. Really did an incredible job. It was jam-packed, there was from face painting to science projects, and so congratulations to the parent organization over there, because it really was a highlight of that day for me, lots of people getting out. The, I also went to the plays, so I'm going to say ditto, ditto, ditto. It was, I went to opening night, intend to go this weekend. They did a wonderful job, so congratulations to the cast and crew, and Director Farrah Buffington, and I'll see you guys at the play. Yesterday, we held our annual Administrative Professional Celebration Event, because this is Administrative Professional Celebration Week, and at that time, we announced that the new Employee of the Year for 2017 is Sherry Esten, so congratulations to her. There'll be more coming up, but there was a surprise celebration, and so we'll be fading her this year, both this spring at the board level, and then, of course, in the parade, she's looking forward to doing her wave in the parade, she said. Not really, she's kind of shy. I'm surprised that Mr. Chair Larkin didn't mention that we were at Booster Bingo last night at Sarnes, and I just want to put a pitch in for the boosters, because they really faithfully work that for the kids, both in our schools and in the community, and it's an excellent way to spend an evening, and in addition, I just want to let the board know that I can now play two bingo cards at once, so I'm making progress. The pre-K through 12 team is, had another round of staffing, and then we have some really special things that are going on in the district that I just want to highlight. That I want to thank the high school art students who volunteered to create and donate over 150 bowls for Seika, for the Empty Bowls fundraiser. They were, the bowls were auctioned off, and all of the money went, or the profit went to the food shelves. Congratulations to Senior Nathaniel Two Bears and freshman Isabella Sandela Haworth and sophomore Diana Stephensmore, who earned the highest possible ranking on the 2017 Minnesota State High School League Solos and Ensemble Contest. And I want to thank Director Palmer for supporting the students, because this was instrumental music, and I believe that they performed with French horn, trombone, and flute respectively, and they earned superior ratings, so that's really cool. And congratulations to the Columbia Heights High School Senior Marcos Ferreira, who was offered and has accepted an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. There were more than 10,000 applications for these posts, and he was one of 1,225 that was accepted. He has not chosen his major, but he hopes to follow in the footsteps of his father and his brother, who are, who were pilots. And this is quite an honor for him, and we're happy to see him, and we're happy for his family on this really outstanding accomplishment. And just in, the local 710, which is our education unit here for the teachers, was recognized this past week by the American Federation of Teachers for being incorporated for 75 years. And so congratulations to them. I attended school board work studies, chair meetings, and had multiple conversations with board members around the table, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Just to tag on the principal meet and greet, perfect timing to come to that and then walk right over to the play. So you're already here, so you'll hear me promote the play more than once tonight, but more than twice. All right, next up is North Park Elementary Video. We've got Casey and Jeff.
Chair Larkin, members of the school boards, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. Tonight, we are introducing the last of our six new informational videos. The North Park Elementary School Video takes you, the viewer, on a short but fact-filled journey that involves collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. A journal, as Principal Jeff Sasek says, maximizes learning for everyone without any exceptions whatsoever. And this is about one of the stories of North Park Elementary School. And as with all of our videos, the stories they tell are aligned to our district mission, core values, strategic roadmap, and comprehensive communications plan. Tonight, in all of our videos, are strategies that help us achieve strategic direction to tell our story. Now, to tell the North Park story is Principal Sasek.
Well, you all have heard me speak many, many times about our story at North Park, in particular, our focus on 21st century skill building. And I think that this video does a nice job of capturing exactly the essence of what it is that we do at North Park. Will, who was the videographer, came in and spent a day, and just had, we just gave him carte blanche, said, "Go where you feel, go where your muse takes you." And he went, and he learned an awful lot, because I was the last interview of the day, and the questions he was asking me, he was so incredibly well-informed just by what he saw during the day, that he was asking me questions that it actually surprised me. And he really dug in and did a nice job, and I think the product speaks for itself.
What goes on this line?
The people are the greatest thing about North Park. Our community is wonderful.
I really like the environment, I really like the teachers, students here.
Do we do reading workstations?
Yes, yes.
North Park gives kids an opportunity to learn about themselves in unique ways.
I feel like I can try new things. It's a learning process every day.
Do these boxes help you?
When our students come in, they're not all identical, they're not all exactly the same, and their needs are not the same.
We offer a lot of choices for students, and those choices really empower our students.
Where they work, how they work, how they create things, what they create.
It gives all of our kids a chance to find which way they learn best.
We're giving them the ability to own their own education.
Every kid has the opportunity to learn on their own pace or on their own way.
Can you tell me about yours?
North Park is a school that's really committed to creating an environment where kids are learning to become problem solvers.
We have dedicated STEAM time for students to bring their curiosity and to explore.
Creating opportunities for kids to take part in science and engineering and arts and math. By giving them those opportunities and that exposure, we are actually going to end up closing that achievement gap.
What did you talk about with your team?
Learning studios are a larger classroom space that allows for whole group instruction, small group instruction, and independent workspace.
Students are given the opportunity to make the space their own.
There's really a level playing field for everyone to find where they succeed, and where someone else succeeds, and to see that in each other.
Now I have this option.
We not only focus on academic rigor, but we also focus on important life skills that students will need for their future.
Our kids need to be able to communicate, collaborate, be creative, and better critical thinkers. And if they have those skills, they really are going to have a lot more choices in a 21st century economy.
To focus my project.
We have a huge amount of technology for our students.
Our kids need to learn how to master all the tools that they're going to need to use.
Our kids are going to have jobs we don't know exist yet.
We need to bring that culture of technology that they use at home, it just makes things more engaging for them and more motivating, it empowers them.
Yours can pick up things.
We really believe in maximizing learning for everyone, without any exceptions whatsoever.
Excellent, good job.
Well done.
Statement of the obvious, another phenomenal video, but the product that they're videoing obviously is, is good to start with, so that makes it...
Makes me miss being a North Park parent.
I was thinking about that, I go, "Mr. Mahos."
We really considered holding Anna back, so.
But we miss you all, we miss you all very much. Thank you, looks great, nice job, Casey, on all the videos, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next up will be the New York Study Seminar update. Do you want to talk about how awesome the play is while you're up here?
Well... Sorry, that was my focus voice. Chair Larkin, members of the school board, and Superintendent Kelly, Principal Roblesky, and I are so pleased to be here with sophomore student Josh Groban to provide you with an update, an informational update on the New York Study Seminar. So Principal Roblesky and I are going to talk a little bit, and then we're going to ask Josh to share a little bit as well. So of course, part of our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and I think we'll share with you that this seminar did just that. This presentation will focus on the core values of excellence and collaboration. This is simply an informational update, there is no governance question attached to this So in overview of the New York Study Seminar, started with a planning committee. We met weekly for months, yes, every Monday afternoon, with a large team, both at the district side and at the high school side, to work out all of the logistics, schedules, all kinds of things. Along with that came a large campaign for fundraising, which we'll go into more detail in our next presentation. The students attended a pre-seminar class before we even loaded up on the bus and hit the road. Two of our Erin Edwison Stern and Mr. Cheetah at the high school provided an overview of the history of Manhattan, of New York, maps, they provided information on the different historical sites and sites that they would be seeing and other information. Other components of the New York Study Seminar were our college visits, Broadway shows, both art and history museums. Students participated in clinics and classes while out there, given by professionals. Some students got up very early in the morning, met Mrs. Scully and Mr. Hodges at 5:30 AM in the lobby for a photography session. There was exploring of the city, chaperone of course, and then quite a bit of reflection on learning. So what we're going to do now is kind of take you through the week through photos, and we'll talk a little bit as we go. So when we first arrived, first of all, we arrived, and Principal Roblesky, I don't know if you want to talk about it, hooked up his phone to the speaker system, and all of the kids belted out some Frank Sinatra, "New York, New York," right?
We did.
So we pulled into New York, and of course, it was early in the day, and so stopped by the historic museum called the Intrepid, which is actually a US aircraft carrier. It also features NASA space shuttles and just different aircrafts throughout the ages. Next, we headed over to, we didn't go out to Liberty Island or to Ellis Island, but of course, we wanted to see it, so very far back in the distance there, you can see the Statue of Liberty and the students there. Next, this is a day of museums and history museums, and you have to remember, the seniors and younger age students right now, they weren't alive yet when 9/11 happened, and so it was a big learning experience for them, and of course, during the pre-class, the pre-session before we left, they learned a bit about it, but I chose a very somber picture because it was a somber visit to the museum. I, we included one photo of a college visit. Look at this learning space in this college visit. I don't know if you can see, but dangling down from above each of the tables are outlets where you can plug in different types of tools to create and make things. So this is at the Parsons New School. The students visited many, many different colleges throughout the week, but I just included one, they loved this tour guide in particular. Next, if you've ever been to Times Square, there's a huge set of red steps, which, of course, we all gathered on one evening in the heart of Times Square to take a photo. It wasn't just a photo op, however, of course, our choir students, Josh included, broke out into song, so gave a performance for all of the folks in Times Square, and you can see, so I ran up behind them. All of the people began to gather and listen to the students, and they just did a phenomenal Here you can see a group of students taking a clinic at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. This museum is half a mile long, it's huge. So there were, there was a lot to explore, and these are, of course, our AP Advanced Art Students, who each carried with them a sketchbook and did lots of reflection, lots of learning, lots of viewing and discussions. They were able to see masterpieces by Van Gogh, by Picasso, by Klimt. Meanwhile, down at the southern tip of Manhattan, the students went to visit and do a student exchange with a high school led by this professor you see here in the photo. He's actually originally from New Orleans, and he's a jazz artist, and so the students got a different kind of flavor. And so not only did they exchange with students, there was lots of Snapchatting happening, yeah?
Yeah.
They had a good time. The kids in New York and here had learned some of the same songs, and were able to sing together, and then show off a little bit for each other and collaborate, but then go and get a jazz lesson from the instructor at the school. So there were also very formal performances, so this is at St. John the Divine Cathedral, where the students put on their formal attire and did a show for about 30 minutes, presentation. And it was, you can see the cavernous cathedral, and the sound was incredible. Once they finished performing, it was a quick change, and then we actually got to, had a tour, the history of the cathedral, and then walk up these very narrow, windy stone steps, all the way up to the ceiling and to the roof. Led on a tour. So here you can see on the bus, Ms. Burling took every opportunity, every moment was a teaching moment, the bus was the classroom as well. So not only was Central Park a classroom, the museum's a classroom, but a trip to Wall Street lended itself for Ms. Burling to give a lesson on bull markets and bear markets, so that's, this is actually, there's a video to accompany this one, on the superintendent's In addition to the different museums and whatnot, the students actually had the opportunity to see two Broadway shows, Paramore and The Phantom of the Opera. We didn't just get to watch the shows, however, the students got to meet the cast, some of the students went backstage, down below, underneath the stage, and learn about some of the behind-the-scenes pieces, and were able to ask the casts all kind of different questions, and do you remember what you said to me at intermission at Phantom?
I think I said, "This is like the best musical I've ever seen, and I want to do it in the future, because it was just so amazing, and the vocals, oh, sorry, it was really amazing."
It was amazing. At intermission, the kids kind of flocked to the staff, just needing to share out about what was happening, and so again, we had time for reflection. The next morning after the Paramore, so Paramore is actually part of Cirque du Soleil, so very acrobatic, lots of movement. The students got to take a class, both a vocal class and a dance class, they learned the opening number to Paramore from the Paramore cast. So they were able to watch them the night before, and then actually interact with the cast members and learn the moves. Do you still remember the moves? Some of them?
Yeah.
All right, so enough of me giving you an overview and talking. Josh, I just wonder if you might want to share some of your biggest takeaways?
Chair Larkin, member of the board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. I'm here to share my experience on the New York Seminar. So my greatest takeaway was from it was, as Superintendent Kelly said, was see, do, learn. And it was mostly seeing the Broadway shows, and I was really amazed by it, but at first I was like, you know, I probably can't do this. And then I went to Amdo, which is a college where people who are on Broadway have come from, and I was like, well, maybe I can do this. And it really got me thinking. It like really inspired me to like, not only do harder in the show that I'm in, that Chair Larkin has been advertising so much, but it made me want to do better in school as a whole because I know I can't get anywhere without an education. And it really broadened my views on what I can do and what I'm capable of, and it just, it was, I think it was really good for me. So, yeah.
Let me just remind you that Josh is a sophomore. Pretty amazing.
Thanks.
So Principal Robleski and I also have some next action steps coming up, so for reflection and follow-up. So we have our pre-learning, our during learning, and then we're planning our post-learning right now, which is kind of a reunion, a gathering of the kids after school. We're going to be conducting a student survey to really collect some data on their learning and what they've done after. Also, while we were there and having conversations with both the teachers and the students, they were already making plans for follow-up. So for example, one of the art students shared with me that after viewing some, what's it called, pointillism, was really inspired, and now, once their AP art portfolio is submitted, that's going to be their next project that they're going to work on. And so really taking the learning and applying it back here in class as well.
Just a few comments. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. What comes to mind, as this is the second tour that I've been on for the New York trip, is opportunities, opportunity gaps. And I want to thank all our supporters who participated in our fundraisers and donated to our trip. I believe that without people donating and participating in our fundraisers, this opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, wouldn't have been made possible. And so I want to thank everybody who did participate and donate. I think one of the things that we learned as a staff from our first trip was, as we talk about see, do, learn, we really needed to focus on that anticipatory set. And the help of our two teachers, Aaron Edwards and Stern, and Dan Cheetah, to help us with that pre-work and the homework that the students did prior to the trip was really beneficial. And I think as the trip went on, or the seminar went on during the week, you could have kids process through 9/11, the Intrepid, I believe it's the spaceship Discovery, the shuttle. And just the experience of being in the stages and behind the scenes of New York shows. And then to have the experience of six of the main cast members of Paramore being there, talking back with your students. I think the application that the pre-work done, which we call the application, or the aha moments for our kids, really played out, and it was a really beneficial experience. Tying into this, the college and career possibilities that Josh talked about and the experiences that we did get and received at the different colleges that we went to, gave students more of an experience than other students might have received if they went out with their parents. So I think this experience and seminar really brings back the work of what we do in the classroom and gives us that see, do, learn. And so again, I just want to thank everybody. I think it was a great experience. We always look for, I guess, how we can really expand for our kids so they can really benefit from each and every minute out there. It was a great experience. Josh, can you just give me another highlight that you really, we didn't really have a lot of, I don't want to say as Josh, but we didn't have a lot of time to go like have fun exploring because it was really an educational experience. But what was your funnest activity that you did?
I'd have to say the Broadway shows, especially Phantom. And it wasn't just viewing the show that was amazing. I was one of the lucky students who got to go backstage thanks to Superintendent Kelly. But it was like, wow, like seeing everything that gets put into the show and having the person who gave us the guide, the walkthrough back there, telling us everything that goes into there. It's not just about the actors, and it's not just about, you know, the music, the people doing like the instruments. It's about, you know, you need architects back there, you know, people who do math and, you know, actually work problems out, you know, it's not all about what's happening on stage. It was, it was just, it was just amazing. And I just hope that in the future, people get to experience the same things that I did because it really changed me. And it's, it's something that I feel like everybody should be able to experience. So I just want to thank everybody who made it possible, and I hope that it's possible for others in the future.
So if there are any questions?
Questions? Shake your head no, Josh. You might have questions.
I have one. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and it really is to thank the board for allowing this to happen. It's a big endeavor. I want to thank you personally for allowing me to go on the trip because I realized that I'm on the bus, so we have other people in command of the district. But it's a wonderful experience for the students, but it also, I think, is for the staff as well. Because you are really with students almost every day for that period of time. And you can't help, at least I'll speak for myself, build relationships that I think will last a lifetime. And if you're interested in any of the soundtrack for how the students, when they were in the cathedral, I thought they sounded like angels, and that's on the Instagram. And they drew such massive crowds in Times Square that that also is there as well. And so that just gives you a snippet of just really how exemplary they were. When they were out at the school in Manhattan, they were like rock stars to those kids. And so it was wonderful just to watch them see, do, and learn, and how much they took away. And what we're going to do as a staff is meet with them, and then, as Principal Robleski said, try to extend that learning in the upcoming year because not everybody gets to New York every two years. And so it's like, if we can't go there all the time, who can we bring here? What experiences can we do in the performing arts now that we have the studio, which I'd like to thank the board for as well? So for that trip, for many students, it's just the first step down the pathway of either knowing and expanding their universe of diversity, of big cities, of we can do this, and for some, exploring the arts. So couldn't do it without the leadership of the board saying, "Go forth and go," so thank you all.
My comments, as a parent of the student that traveled there, my first question is always when they get back, "How'd it go?" Meaning, how were, and one in particular about the kids. And it does not surprise me, it never surprises me, but the same message comes back that, Josh, you guys represent our school so well, all of the kids. The behavior, the respect, and all the different things. And again, it's not a surprise, but I think it's worth noting that, and you kind of alluded to it. But, you know, the representatives that we had, staff as well, obviously, but, you know, the kids that were out there, and not only how well you performed but behaved, thank you for that and spread that word. And the one thing that I'm taking away from this tonight, Josh, and I'm glad to hear this, that you saw an opportunity open up that you thought you may never have. Don't let that go. Follow that. I know you a little bit, but, you know, the potential that you have is what you choose it to be. So follow that dream if that's where you're headed, buddy. Thanks for coming in and talking tonight. Appreciate that.
See you at the play Thursday night.
When is that play?
Saturday.
Thursday, Saturday.
Friday, and Friday.
And Friday.
Very good. What time?
Seven o'clock, B. Square.
There you go, buddy. Tell your friends, too, spread the word.
Actually, I have pamphlets if you got, I have cards if you want them.
What's that?
I have cards if you want them.
You have cards?
You can autograph them.
Leave some, because I need to get some handed out, so. Yeah, if you have some cards, leave them on the back table. I'm going to take care of that. Okay, thanks again. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Ena.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Well, you guys aren't going anywhere. You can go, but you guys got to stay. They got to stay. They got more. See you, buddy. See you Thursday. Next up is the auto-state field trip presentation.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. Principal Robleski and I are going to ride the coattails of that presentation to present to you a proposal for the upcoming New York Study Seminars. So of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner, and again, focusing on core values of excellence and collaboration. We will be bringing forth a governance question to you to approve the New York Study Seminar for 2019. And you'll note, we're bringing this to you now in the spring of 2017 because as Principal Robleski mentioned earlier, during the first tour, there was a lot of learning and reflecting, and we realized yet again, we'd like to approve it earlier rather than wait a year because there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of fundraising that happens, and if we have that extra 12 months of time to fundraise, it's less of a burden on the families. So the main purpose of the study seminars to provide multifaceted field experiences to students as an extension of the high school curriculum. Some of the features that we've mentioned before are college visits, professional experiences, including clinics, classes, and tours. And then we found that student and staff collaboration, collaboration with professionals in New York, this camaraderie that happened on the long bus ride and throughout the entire week. Lots of critical thinking, creativity, many of our core values and life skills coming into play. And then the students having that possibility to perform in New York City and then also see professional performances are some of the main features. We have two points of research for you that we use as part of a basis for this seminar. So of course, this 2014 study really highlights how enriching field excursions increase rates of student critical thinking, historical empathy and tolerance, or really accepting of others. So we have found this to be absolutely true on our New York seminar. A second piece of newer research in 2016, looking at how the arts support achievement in schoolwide, or in school, while bolstering the skills of the 21st century workforce. So that is exactly what our aim is to do, creating college and career readiness students and not just focusing on math and reading, but really focusing on that well-rounded education, all of the students. So the proposal for, we've updated the proposal from previous years, and so this is similar to what we presented last year. So just to bring it forth again, this current year, we brought a group of students in art and choir. Then in 2018, it would be an off-year, however, we'd like permission to fundraise, begin the planning and preparation. And then 2019, it would be again, art, but then band instead of choir, and so on and so forth as you go through the years. So there's an on-year and an off-year, and the groups of students change it a little bit. So again, Principal Robleski and I are focusing in on that fundraising, that ever-important fundraising. So we wanted to share with you some of the efforts that were made this year in the fundraising and thank again our local businesses for donations. Sales, the students sold, how many of you purchased, you know, a butter braid, a poinsettia, et cetera, et cetera? So they had many different, many different things that they were selling. Again, the Columbia Heights Booster Club is so supportive of our schools and of our students. Many bingo nights at Sarnas and many meat raffle nights at Millers. Students can earn money by working different concession stands. So like on a Saturday tournament here at the Highlander Center, a group of students and the teachers went down to the U.S. Bank Stadium and to do kind of like ushering, and they earned money for doing that. Columbia Heights High School hosted a spaghetti dinner at Merson Hall where students performed. There were different proceeds from local restaurants. If you go and purchase lunch on this day and say, you know, you want your money to go to Columbia Heights High School, we've got some money that way. Kids and teachers went grocery bagging at local grocery stores and sold coupon books. And so I don't think my list is all-inclusive, but that's a long, long list of everything that entails in order to offset the costs for both, for the families. So again, we will be bringing back, we will be bringing this back to you at a future, near-future school board meeting with a governance question of approving the New York Study Seminar for 2019. And again, it's earlier than, it's a year earlier than normally we would have done, but because we really need that time to fundraise.
Questions?
I do, can I? With the expansion of like the theater program looking forward and more kids getting involved in arts, we've seen that in band especially, how does that impact the number of students who will be going on the trip? Or is it limited to how many can fit on a coach bus, or what's the?
We tried to prove how many could actually fit on a coach bus when the bus broke down, Bill. But that's kind of a smug, I think, question. I think that we always are looking at, and then Principal Robleski, please respond, but I think we're looking at, the trip isn't for everyone. It's meant to be a seminar. And so it will, I don't want to say it's select from the standpoint of any student that can't afford it. We'll find ways to do that, but as far as who is going, there is a selection process. And Professor, Principal Robleski, you could address that.
Well, depending on, with going back to the process of the years and who's going, the thought process behind that is that if you are in fine arts, over a period of four years, you will have that opportunity. We do a criteria process of, you know, seniors, juniors, and we go through, and as the expansion goes, you know, if, we try to make it a select group of students. So the question is, what if that select group of students expands? I think we would look at that as we, as we address that volume of students that would be coming out. And I think that's one of the reasons why with the board's approval that all children will go is that by having this approved a year earlier, the ability to do the fundraising, and if that becomes a possibility to provide for more, that would, that'd be the whole goal behind that process.
If I could add one more thing, remember, Sears, and I think that we're establishing the theater department at the high school. And so at this point, we happen to have the choir, and we had theater students who performed with the choir, but were also in the plays. I think that we probably would have to have a discussion about what, where we would loop in theater, or if they would be a subset of the choir trip with that. And what we've learned from Diane Scully is that the AP art students don't hang out for the trip, so you have to capture them when you can, so they're always a smaller group. But they are a select group of kids that are really advanced in their art, that will really benefit from the painting and the drawing and the individual instructions at the museum and prepare for their AP portfolios as well, so.
Anyone else? Okay, that makes sense, starting early. Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel better, Bill. Next up is the American Indian Education Resolution, and Laura?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I am coming to you this evening to bring an informational update regarding the American Education Resolution within our district. Again, our American Indian Education is really working to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, both our American Indian students and also our general population of students as we work to increase cultural awareness and support all students. The core values that are really included in our American Indian education programming include community excellence and collaboration, specifically with our families in the community. So I'm going to begin just by giving you a really brief overview of some of the great programming that we have going on. I think that it's important to celebrate what we're doing as we're looking forward to the future. So really, our vision with American Indian Education is to prepare our American Indian students for college and careers by providing those academic... American Indian students for college and careers by providing those academic, academic supports, um, embedded in the classroom, and then also, um, the cultural groups and supports, mentorship opportunities for students, and then also to meet the expectations of the world's best workforce Indian education plan. So, these are our goal areas, um, they're all ongoing, we're really working to increase our student identification and assessment. Doing that needs assessment to make sure that we really are partnering with families and, and creating supports and programs that are meeting the needs of our students as we're preparing them for college and careers. Family engagement, um, is an area that we've really grown in, and we're really excited about the partnerships that we have with families. Um, again, that world's best workforce Indian education plan, all of our goals with American Indian Education are linked to the world's best workforce, and we do, with our parent committee, have links between those committees, which has been a really great partnership. Um, we're working to, um, continue with our professional development for staff, so that we can increase cultural awareness and really be embedding those, um, native narratives and strands into all of our courses across the district, um, and then, um, with the support of the Teaching and Learning Department, really, um, enhancing our curriculum instruction for all students. So, again, these are the, um, components of the world's best workforce, um, that five areas that all children are ready for school, all third graders can read at grade level, all racial and economic, economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are ready for college and careers, all students graduate from high school. And so, with all of our, um, program plans for American Indian Education, we're always linking back to the world's best workforce, making sure that we're really utilizing data, analyzing our results, um, and determining those supports, um, for our students. And that's all incorporated as we're creating those plans, and then also budgeting for upcoming years. So, now for the fun things, the celebrations, um, very excited to announce, and I know that many of you have heard this, um, but for the last two years in a row, we have a 100% graduation rate for our American Indian students in the district, which is really fantastic, and, um, we look forward to continuing that pattern. Some of the other celebrations that we just wanted to cover tonight are our student mentorship programs, we have, um, Karen Monet, who's a cultural liaison, who does, um, cultural groups for students, and then specifically with our secondary students, Dave Larson has been a check and connect mentor, working with our American Indian students, and has done really fantastic things, getting students, um, out on field trips to college campuses, bringing in that family engagement piece by really, um, having regular family meetings, bringing in speakers, um, and opening up our doors to all of our families, um, and then supporting with professional development, he does a lot of, they do a lot of work with our teachers within the district. So, just specifically, I wanted to take a moment to celebrate the work, um, that Dave Larson has done, and, um, his wife Val, who has, um, provided a lot of that support as well, and so Chair Larkin, I believe, um, there's a celebration that, that we're gonna do for them this evening, unfortunately, due to, um, some recent health issues, they're unable to be here this evening, but we wanted to take the time to really celebrate their work and contributions.
Yep, and I do have a little thing I'd like to read to them, we do have certificates, and I think we'll try and make the time when they're able to, to come back in to present their certificates, but
Absolutely.
it was certainly, it was a natural tie to be talking about them tonight with everything that they've done with this program, so, um, the Columbia Heights School Board would like to take this time to honor the work and contributions of Dave and Val Larson to our district. Dave has worked with us as a check and connect mentor for students since January of 2016. He has worked hard to provide opportunities for students to learn about their heritage through hands-on experiences. This has included field trips, college visits, and connecting students and families with local organizations. Val also worked with us in the fall to support our programs and students. Both Dave and Val have worked hard to create and sustain family engagement programs to provide families the opportunity to connect with one another and with our district. They have pride, provided incredible support to American Indian students and families, and we'd like to honor them this evening with their certificates of appreciation, so, um, they are both obviously one for one and the other, but, uh, in recognition for your support of American Indian students and families in the Columbia Heights Public Schools, thank you for your dedication to students, staff, and community of the Columbia Heights Public School District, so. Dave and Val, thank you very much, and we'll get you back to give you your certificates, um, hopefully soon.
Yes.
When I'm in, so.
Thank you, Chair Larkin. So, just to look at some of our student programs, um, I, there's so much going on, so I'm gonna just kind of give brief overviews, but, um, our K-12 arts across, so across the district have been working with, um, Indian land tenure to really work on increasing cultural awareness and promote education by providing teachers with those tools to tell our stories, and so it's been really fun to see how that's been interwoven into our arts classes and curriculum. We have been implementing the learning trunks in our K-5 classrooms, which were purchased last year, and, um, those include topics at each grade level, including sovereignty and relatives, and a, a number of other topics, and so, there's been a lot of collaboration across the grade levels, um, throughout all three elementary schools, as they're, um, working to implement these, um, they really have taken a lot of initiative for that professional development, and seeking out indigenous authors and illustrators to really make sure that we're pulling in all of those narratives, um, and supporting all students in, in learning those stories. We also, um, just this week, had the K-5 teams present what they've been doing with the, um, learning trunks to our 612 teachers, so really excited about the potential that we have to continue moving those forward and deepening, um, the students' understanding as they grow through the grade levels. Um, our K-5, or 35 literacy, um, leadership team has also done a lot of work to, um, be pulling in additional texts and, um, really tying in native strands with, um, our overall district-wide literacy goals, and so, um, that's been really fun, um, to hear about Blooming Heights, actually, Maya Lemon, who works with Blooming Heights, has been able to come in and really support with writing some curriculum, um, related to, um, incorporating literacy, but also really relating our, um, the, the K-5 trunks, so creating units that are incorporating and tying in and complementing one another, which is fantastic, and also bringing in, um, some of the food pieces and doing wild rice tastings with students, and, um, really linking that back to our Blooming Heights edible school garden, which has been fantastic. Additional, um, work on literacy, especially within our secondary level, so, um, grade six through 12 English Language Arts, really working to bring in, um, texts by those American Indian authors, and, um, challenging students to see those different narratives. Um, and then field trips, as I mentioned, with Dave Larson, really bringing students out, um, some students have done the Bodote Tours, there have been a number of different field trips, so that students really are learning about historical sites, and especially within Minnesota, where we have such a rich history, um, deepening their understanding, and, um, again, with college and career preparation, the college visits have been a really key factor in that. So, we are very excited about, um, the family and community support that we have, we've had just a number of families really, um, come together and support the district as we're implementing these different things and working to strengthen and grow our programs. Also wanted to note that, as part of that, we will be hosting a powwow this spring, so on May 20th, which is a Saturday, mark your calendars, the tentative time, um, to begin that is at 1:00 PM, and, um, we just have been really excited about how, um, these powwows have gone over the last couple of years, um, within our district and a few others, to celebrate, um, the culture and heritage of our American Indian families. So, the rationale behind why I'm here this evening, giving you this update, is because each year, um, we have, um, a resolution that comes before the board regarding our programming for American Indian students. So, for the past number of years, we, um, have belonged to a consortium with, um, Fridley Public Schools and Spring Lake Park Schools, and so, that is governed by one parent committee that we have worked with, um, and that's the parent committee that brings, brings this resolution for concurrence, they provide feedback on all of our plans and ensure, give us that check and balance to make sure that we really are working to meet the needs of all of our American Indian students. So, again, this is an annual resolution of concurrence that comes from the parent committee. This year, um, we did receive feedback from the committee that they were not concurring with the programs, um, of the, of the three district consortium, so I did include, um, in here, the, the second bullet is a quote from the letter, so, the, the concurrence is submitted to, um, us Columbia Heights Public Schools has been, um, the, has taken the lead of this consortium, and so the resolution came to us, and it was, um, of non-concurrence with our programs, and so, that has to be submitted by the parent committee, along with recommendations and rationale for why, and, so, in delving deeper into that, the letter that we received from the parent committee said, "We feel the students' needs are being met in Columbia Heights School District," and then it went on to lay out some concerns with the other two school districts that are part of our consortium, and so, as we have, have tried to tease this out and, and determine how to best move forward with a non-concurrence, that's really based on concerns with the other districts, um, we've been in consultation with the Minnesota Department of Education, and so they recommended that the parent committee come to each individual school board to present, um, their specific concerns related to that school district. And so, um, this evening, we invited, um, Brandy Grant, who is the chairperson of that parent committee, unfortunately, she was unable to come tonight, but, um, the purpose of this is just to provide that space for the parent committee to provide their specific concerns regarding our American Indian programming, and, um, at this point, we don't have any specific recommendations for improving programming in Columbia Heights, because, going back to that second bullet point, the parent committee agrees that in Columbia Heights Public Schools, we are meeting the needs of our American Indian students. So, they will be pursuing, um, presentations with the other two district school boards to talk specifically about those concerns. And so, um, each school board has to respond to any specific recommendations, and at this time, there aren't for, there aren't any specific recommendations for Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, we are really excited about, um, our plan for the future. As part of that, um, consortium, um, the plan moving forward is that if each district is planning to pursue federal funding for American Indian education programming, um, they will be applying for that, for that funding separately. So, moving for, forward for the 17, 18 school year, Columbia Heights Public Schools will be applying individually for funding, and so that means that we are beginning to form our own parent committee of, um, families comprised of, families from Columbia Heights Public Schools, so we're very excited about that opportunity to really narrow our focus and make sure that we're working with the community and focusing on Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, we have a new parent committee that's already up and running in the works, they have, um, committee dates all set, and on the district calendar for next year, um, that committee includes Columbia Heights Public Schools, um, families, staff, students, um, and we're looking forward to increasing the membership of that, but really looking deeply at our programs and, um, and identifying areas to strengthen and grow our programs as we're shifting our focus from this three district consortium to just Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, I had a chance to speak, uh, today with Cheryl, Sherilyn Davies, who is, um, who has stepped up to become, um, the chairperson for the parent committee that's forming for next year, and she just, um, wanted me to pass along that she is very, very excited about the programming and what we're doing in Columbia Heights, and looking forward to pulling in more voices from parents within our community, and just, um, touched on the fact that she's really looking forward to transparency, and that that's been a big part of our processes, we've been forming this new parent committee, that we're just, um, looking forward to being really open and honest and making those collaborative plans together as we're looking at the future. So, at this time, um, I don't have any further, um, governance questions requiring action, but would like to open it up for questions.
What is the next step on the governance side?
Um, at this point, the next step, um, as I mentioned, is that the parent committee are gonna go specifically to the other districts and share their specific concerns, um, and if, then the school boards who have received those specific concerns will have to respond to the parent committee with their action steps. At this point, there's nothing further that we need to do as a school district, per the Department of Education, we just are, um, in the process of starting our application for funding for the next school year, and so moving forward, we'll be bringing the resolution of concurrence from our own parent committee, and that'll typically come in February. So, no further action needed at this time.
I sat next to a woman at Phase Three Training last week, who said she saw our Native American curriculum at the show and tell at MSBA and was very impressed, so.
Yeah, we were able to have a booth, um, to
Yeah.
really show off some of the programming that we're doing in the learning trunks, and we're very proud of that. Thank you to Director Stenbik for all of her work with that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the, the annual capital project levy update. Go on, Brian. Your phone turned off, Bill.
It is, I'm in good shape for that.
We're in a unique group together now here.
That's right. This is not all on me anymore. Anyway, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Yeah, Brian and I are both here this evening to give you an update on our capital projects, um, levy that, uh, came into effect here three years ago, and just to talk about the projects that, that we've done, and what we're planning to do again now for this next year. Again, um, at Columbia Heights, we're here to, uh, create world of opportunity for every learner, and a big part of that is, is our buildings, and, um, so when we talk about our core values tonight, we're really talking about community and excellence, um, with our buildings and the facilities that we supply for our, for our students. If you remember, um, back when we talked to our community about this, um, referendum, 60% of those dollars were gonna go towards, uh, facility maintenance, and the 40% was gonna go for technology. And when we look at the facility side of it, we really were looking at replacing, repairing roofs, windows, doors, plumbing, and casework, um, really looking at, uh, repairing furnaces and boilers, or replacing if needed, um, water damage, siding, I mean, pretty much all the facility things you could think about when you talk about maintenance. So, a lot of brick tuck pointing, our, our buildings, if you, you know, are all built in, um, the early 60s into the middle of 60s, so they're all about the same age, so we're, we're getting some age on them now. Um, we need to resurface that athletic track, and we need to improve signage, um, and then repair parking and driveways.
Uh, and from the technology side, um, a lot of conversation about increasing internet bandwidth, making sure that we have proper connection, um, for the students and the staff, um, with personalized learning initiative, um, talk about that parent and student portal, we've moved to a new student information system, and, and then there's a new parent and student portal, and there's a lot of work, um, to do to continue to integrate things into that portal, um, so we've made some inroads there, um, talk about the technology systems for safety and security, um, obviously, that's a very important component moving forward, um, we have to have the infrastructure to support all of this, so, uh, the wireless connections and, and the infrastructure, uh, the equipment to be able to support all the devices, um, so that's gonna be an ongoing as we expand. Obviously, we need, we're acquiring devices, personal, um, devices for the students to use, and, um, we need to continue to support the teachers, staff development, um, and, making sure that we're staffed to the level where we can do that, so those are the main components, um, from a technology side.
When we look at the projects that we've done, uh, to date, um, back in 2016, uh, 2016 was the first year that we had the money available, uh, for us to use, and if you recall, um, Highland, we reconfigured the drive, uh, really was, uh, looked at that as a pretty large safety issue, as we, before we did the reconfiguration, you know, we had buses and parents and, and students walking, all intermixed, and it really was, we needed to take those and separate them, and I think that project worked out very well, and another piece of that money that first year is we redid the front doors and the windows above that over at the high school, and then we did a, um, study on tuck pointing, um, over at CA, 'cause that's really, our window, that, we had a, a area of that building, we really had some water coming through the wall, so we really took a look at that.
For technology in that first year, um, and for some of you may not realize that this, this year wasn't technically the first year of personalized learning initiative in the school district, um, it was just that this enabled us to continue that initiative, it provided the funding to continue that and bring it to our ultimate goal, um, and, so it's gonna take us some time to get there, but, um, that's why, um, we have 10 years of, of dollars, so that we can get there, and then we can maintain it moving forward. So, that year, it was grades five through eight, um, bringing those two grade levels, um, up to speed, um, and the staff development that went along with it. Um, in the initial years, um, there's a lot more funding, um, associated with the network infrastructure, um, just just really ramping up that capacity. Going forward, we'll see that those dollars we spend in that area decrease a little bit, at least for the next few years. And we'll see increase in staff development dollars because as that capacity grows, it just, that need grows there.
When we look at seventeen, last summer, we did a large drive reconfiguration over at Valley View. We did the same thing where we separated the parents' cars and the buses. And now we have a much safer condition. And then at CA, we did a very large tuck pointing project. And I can say now we don't have water dumping in lockers anymore. So that was a very good thing.
On the technology side, we expanded to grades four through nine, or four and nine. So we went down a level at the elementary and then we went up into the high school. Going into the high school is definitely new. It's different definitely than the middle school. But also very exciting from the standpoint of it's opened our eyes this year to a lot of the possibilities that we may not be necessarily taking advantage of yet. And with the staffing, with our tech integration specialists, and then actually this brings some of the changes that we're making moving forward, we see a lot of possibilities. We've over-doubled our staff development this year. And we will continue to see that grow, our staff development opportunities. So we're really expanding. And June will be really big for us this year with the effort that we're going to put forward to get ready for next year.
Okay, and as you already know, I brought some relatively large projects forward to you that we have let bids on. So for the third year of our projects, of the capital projects levy, big projects, the biggest project will actually be over at the Columbia Academy. Where as you, if you remember, a few years back, we actually did put new windows in the north side of that building when we redid, reconfigured that drive. So anyway, the rest of that building, where we see windows this summer. And then we are starting to work with the high school and replacing domestic water lines. If you remember, I think I showed most everybody the pipe that we pulled out that you can't see through any longer. So we feel very good about getting that project started and to get that plumbing updated.
For next year, planning for what we're doing, obviously, we're expanding personalized learning. Grades ten and eleven this next year, so we want to push the high school. There's just not enough funding to do the whole high school at one time. We can only expand by two grade levels at a time. So there's definitely going to be some challenges there at the high school that we have to work through, work with the high school on. But we have an ample amount of lab tuck carts still available in the building that are going to help us in the areas where we need to make sure that the seniors still have access that they need to have. So that won't change. So our focus moving forward, as it was this year and as nationally for all districts, and whether it's the metro here or nationally, Chromebooks are kind of the device of choice as we move forward. And they provide what we need in that area, especially since we are a Google district. And that's where we're building a lot of what we have. The network infrastructure, each year, we kind of have a focus building. And obviously, the high school, if we're expanding by two, that needs to be a focus building. And Valley View, it's been a few years since we've done any focus there. So we need to make sure that we ramp up in that building as well. And for classroom technology, I think we're going to see this area expense for us grow a little bit in the coming years, just because of the age of some of our audiovisual equipment in the classrooms. And we need to start replacing them at a little bit higher rate. So that will definitely be a focus. And then, of course, staffing and staff development. So making sure that as we move forward, we're staffed appropriately and that we continue to grow our PD opportunities, our professional development opportunities. And that's been a huge collaboration with the teaching and learning department and making sure that we're getting the best bang of our buck and collaborating with them and making sure that we have the opportunities for our staff.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Do you have questions? Go ahead.
Based on where you're at now, kind of in year three, are you in line with where you thought you'd be and kind of planning as to move forward? Do you look like, what was presented as far as the ten-year plan? Do you feel like you're where you need to be?
Well, that's a very good question. Actually, we'll talk about that a little bit in my next presentation. But actually, I think we've, at least on the facility side, I think we've done some projects and we've got some things done more than I anticipated. So I do feel very good about the safety issues that we've corrected, especially with our drives. And as I say, we'll get into some more detail of the rest of it here in a few minutes.
And I would agree, at least in this initial part, we're definitely pretty close to exactly where we thought we'd be. We knew that initially, we were going to have a lot more infrastructure costs. And of course, those devices are a high cost. And as we ramped up, we knew we were going to have to have more staff support, technology staff support. And so we knew that we were going to, that cost was going to increase. And then we knew the infrastructure side was going to decrease once we got that built up. So at least in year three, we feel pretty good about where we're at. We didn't necessarily have that quite vision of that we were going to do ten and eleven this year. We just knew that it was two grade levels a year. But after what's happening at the elementary level and the need at the high school level, it makes perfect sense to go that route. And so that's really the only change that we've made, which isn't really necessarily changing what our expects, our expenses we expected to be. And so I think from that aspect, we're definitely online. And I think that we were, we did a good job of having those conversations early, especially about the professional development and that need for the additional staffing moving forward because we are seeing that. So again, excited about June this year and all the opportunities we're going to have.
Anyone else?
Do you have one more comment? I just, thank you. I just wanted to remind the board that when the levy passed, we said that we would, on an annual basis, be very transparent and review everything that we were spending the money on. Because sometimes there had been criticisms that it wasn't transparent enough or that different things popped up into the plan that the public was not either appreciative of or didn't know about. And so we're really going to try to stick to the plan. And we're going to try every year to come back at around this time each year and log it onto a board meeting and also be on our website so that anybody here that has any questions can go back and say, are they really spending the money? What was the plan? And is it, are we working the plan? So that when this levy is up in year nine and ten, that the community can look back and say, yes, they walked their talk on that. It's very important to us.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the capital improvement plan. I think this was actually a board request at one point, so.
Yes, we had a board request to really look at our capital plan, really see what we had discovered during that plan and how we're going forward, trying to take care of the recommendations that came forward. So yeah, so tonight, we're going to talk about our capital improvement plan. Just talk about our mission again, especially when we talk about our facilities. We really want to create world of opportunity for every learner. And we really want our facilities to be what we need for that learning process. Tonight, when we talk about those buildings, we're looking at the community because they really share in what the costs are to run these buildings. Of course, we want excellence in these buildings and some collaboration, especially when we talk about with our partners. So a few years back, about five years ago, we put together a ten-year capital facility plan. And at that time, we brought in architects, MLE architects. We brought in our mechanical engineers, Halberg, that we've worked with them for many, many years. Our civil engineer, Anderson Johnson. And then Inspect, they do the work with us with our roof and exterior envelope of our buildings. And then we used Kraus Anderson really to come in and cost, what's this going to cost? And, you know, try to put a package together. And really guidelines when we looked at everything, I mean, we looked, we walked every single building, looked in every single room. But ADA accessibility, of course, is a huge thing that we have to keep in mind and we have to have it available. Of course, we got to adhere to all our, you know, Minnesota State Building Codes. And safety and security was really a big piece, especially when we talk about some of our older buildings. And of course, building and maintenance items. When we get the age of buildings that are starting to pull, you know, fifty, sixty years, there's maintenance that we have to do on them to keep them going. And of course, we look at the Minnesota Department of Education and the space needs that they, they say that we should really have. So what I'm going to do is kind of hit the highlights of each building. You get an idea. And you're going to, it sounds like a little bit of a broken record, especially if you go back and remember what we went, we brought to our community when we talked about our capital projects levy and the things that we need to touch for our buildings. So when we look at Valley View, and these are the recommendations that came out of this study, is really the bus drop-off and parent drop-off needs to be better than it was. It really was a safety issue. Site signage really needed to be improved. Portions of our roof are in poor condition over at Valley View. And actually, you're going to see that on every slide for each building. Windows, everything in that building, when we talk about windows, is original, except now where we did, we put the addition on. We had, we did, we did some doors on that building at that time, but that's all they have. Exterior doors, our brick masonry, we talked about tuck pointing earlier. Some of our joints, the sealants, the caulking is really starting to, it's aged and it's drying up. It needs to be replaced. Casework, if you've been in our buildings, you see a lot of casework needing some repair. And then specifically at Valley View, the stage floor really needs to be refinished and that partition door doesn't work, so it needs to be replaced. Fire alarm system, they were aged and the recommendation, they need to replace those. And of course, the elevator. I remember a few years back, we were doing a lot of elevator work, if you remember. We switched over to Highland Elementary School, a lot of the same thing. So we looked at the bus drop-off, really need to be improved. Signage, really, we need to point to, you know, where is the front door? Portions of that roof too are in poor condition in the masonry walls and the joints and the casework and of their stage floor and partition is the same situation. And of course, the fire alarm. Over at North Ark Elementary School, a little longer list, but if you've been over there, their drive needs to be improved too. We really have some issues with the way that the playground is kind of incorporated with the bus drop-off and pickup. Sinage, again, roofs and the walls, windows, joints, casework. If you remember that stage floor, we've actually just taken some pieces out of there because they just were not even usable any longer. Fire alarm, and then we really need to look at that building. And when we took a look at safety and security, we got to find a way to bring the admin out to the door so when people come in to our building, they're greeted with admin and we know who's in our building. And you see how we changed those in some of our other buildings already. We look at Columbia Academy, some of the same things, really the main entry. And I'm going to talk in a minute about what we have done, so I'm just going to kind of pop through these. Again, the roofs are getting to that poor conditions stage along with our masonry walls. And that's where we did a lot of tuck pointing already. Our joint sealant, our casework alarm system. Our air handlers are past life expectancy over there. And elevator. We look at the high school, again, a lot of the same things. We looked at really needing some signage. Of course, we just talked about the domestic water supply. Roof in poor condition, masonry walls, seals, joints, casework, fire alarm. Our air, most of our air handlers here on the high school too are past their life expectancy. And as you know, we're doing a project there this summer too. We're actually replacing one of those this year. Our wood shop dust collector, way past life expectancy. And of course, the elevator. And then we need to look at our track. It's time to resurface that track. So these are the things that came out in that study, kind of rose to the top of the list. You know, these things need, are the things that you need to take care of. And I looked at Tom Foley at the time, and that's before we had a capital projects levy. It's before we had any long-term maintenance money. All we had was our capital dollars. And I said, how, how are we going to, you know, take care of this? There was no way we were going to be able to. So I'm very grateful that the community is giving us some funds to take care of some of these maintenance items. Otherwise, we could never get through this list of items in a ten-year period. So just to give you an idea, kind of the money that's available for us to use for maintenance items on a yearly basis. We do get capital funding, this is what we had before. There's about four hundred thousand that we use for maintenance on a yearly basis. And of course, now the new capital projects levy is generating six hundred thousand dollars on a yearly basis for this. And then the new long-term facility maintenance, we have about seven hundred thousand there. And then that's also a new funding. So that's really helped us where that's something we didn't have before. So back when we first did the study, Tom and I were looking at that four hundred thousand. I didn't even know where we even could start because we hardly even scratched the surface. So now you can see we have well over one and a half million dollars that we can use on a yearly basis to really do some bigger projects and really, you know, take care of some maintenance in our, in our older buildings. So just to give you a, just kind of reminder of what we have done over the last few years. Because I think we've really touched a lot of things. First, the drive reconfiguration, we've done that at Columbia Academy. We've done that at Highland, and we've done that at Valley View. And it actually touched the high school a little bit. But we've really been able to do some big projects and really improve the safety of our students being dropped off and picked up here. Now, windows and doors, as I said, the north side of Columbia Academy already has all brand-new windows. And we put new doors on the front side. On Highland now, after last summer, all the windows and doors have been replaced in that building. So we feel very good about that. And the high school is in pretty good shape. They've had some past projects that we've got a lot of windows done. And now we're almost done with that building. We look at, we actually rebuilt three different elevators. Actually, it's four elevators because there's two in the high school. This took a lot of money here about forty-four to five years ago. I think every time I came and they were talking about elevators, the board kind of looked at me like, another elevator? Yeah, I'm sorry, we're going to have to replace these elevators. Coolers and freezers, been replaced in four buildings in the last five years. We're in very good, we're in very good condition now when we look at our food service and storing our food. Fire alarms, now they've been replaced in all five buildings. At the elementaries, the serving lines in the food service have been, have been redone. And we really were having some large back problems with our staff. And we were able to reconfigure that so they don't have to reach as far just to reach the students' trays. And that's been a great improvement. You remember about our steam line that broke out in the parking lot here a few years ago? We had to redo that. That was a very large project. We've replaced several burners and repiped a couple boilers. And we're keeping these, you know, these furnaces going and they're doing a great job for us. Last summer, we replaced a baseball dugout. We really had kind of a safety issue there. They were kind of starting to fall down. So we got those fixed up. I think it looks pretty good if you're out there at a baseball game now. And we did a big tuck pointing project over at Columbia Academy. Sinage, internal signage, three buildings were all replaced with new signage. And then, as you know, we got new, we got four new marquee, actually, five new marquee signs. So the first one we did was right out here when we really pointed to where the district center was and where the high school was. So big improvements there in signage. We did some remodeling in the band inquiry rooms over at Columbia Academy. We really found when we looked at the safety, health and safety piece there, we had some really big rooms and cold when we look at over a thousand square feet. Have to have a second exit. And they, those rooms did not. So they do now. Security, we've done a lot of work with security in all our five buildings. As you know, now when you come in, you have to check in. Where before, the doors are just open. People could just come in and go wherever. So, and even, and in here too, you see that we, we put that new wall in and it's worked out very well. I think we have, our buildings are much more secure than they were five years ago. Playgrounds, we put a brand-new playground in Highland Elementary School. And Valley View will get their second half of their new playground this summer. So another very large project that really has been needed as they've been getting older and older. And if you remember, when we designated the art and science room, both at Highland and Valley View in those remodels, that came out of our capital dollars. And those rooms, you know, got all new floors, got all new ceilings, all new lighting. They got new air handlers and air conditioning's included now for those rooms. So we've done some really nice projects there also. So going forward, as you know, just to touch again, the, we're going to want to finish up the domestic water plumbing over at the high school a year from now. And the big project that we're looking at right now is really going to look at windows at Valley View. If you remember the tour we did just a few weeks ago, you know, the seals at Valley View are really irrigating. It's time that we have to take care of that. So that's kind of bubbled to the top of that list. And of course, we got health and safety items that we have to touch every year. And then what we've done on a yearly basis, taken our list and really prioritized, you know, where are the biggest needs at? Because you'll see now in the next year or two, you'll start seeing the roof starting to bubble up to the surface. But we don't have any drastic, drastic problems. We go walk- But we don't have any drastic, drastic problems, we, we, we go walk all our roofs every year, if we see anything that's happening, we do a, you know, a small repair job with them right away, um, so we don't have any leaks, and that's been working out pretty well. But it's almost time that we have to start replacing them. So that's kinda the big overview. Um, like I said, I think I feel very, a lot better, some of this new funding that we've received over the last couple of years, where I think we're gonna get through our project list in a, over that 10-year period. Um, I think one big cost that's gonna be harder, and it's gonna be towards the end, is, you know, like, the casework in the buildings, even though, especially when you look over at North Park, um, casework looks really poor, and, and we gotta take care of it. But anyway, big cost items, but I hope it gives you at least, and I, you know, better understanding of what we're working on, and kinda what we've done. So I guess both Tom and I feel pretty good at what we've been able to accomplish the last few years. Any questions?
I just, I wanna say thank you for putting all of that together. I think it was really good for us to see, and for me especially, to be able to see the work that's been done, the process, and what still needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks for the responsible use of that money to help the schools.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, board policies, the first reading, uh, 413 harassment and violence, 533 is wellness, 616 is school district system accountability, um, and these policies will appear in a future agenda for approval. Uh, next up is the, uh, Natty's gonna share a little bit about, uh, she attended the National School Board Association Conference, and she's gonna share some of the things that she brought back.
Yeah, I was, was hoping to have Holla here to chime in, but I guess I can...
We'll have her talk.
Okay, she, she gets to share too.
She, yeah.
I was gonna make up a whole bunch of stuff, no, totally kidding. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for allowing me to go, thanks, thanks to the community for sending me. It was a really great opportunity to represent our state, uh, there was a lot of people who were just simply impressed that we're from Minnesota. I didn't realize that was impressive in the land of education, but apparently it is. And then our district as well, I hope I did that well, met a lot of people, I like to talk to people while I walk from the hotel, it seemed to be the best time to meet, um, people and just hear about their schools and share some things about us. Uh, we did go to some large group sessions, uh, they, there were some great speakers, uh, but I think they were directed mostly at getting people excited about education, um, and given the fact that I'm already very excited about education, I was like, yay, me too, you know, like, so that was interesting but good, and really compelling speakers. They had a, the, an astronaut who had lived in space for an entire calendar year, so he talked about the research he did there and how education wasn't part of that, and how it affected him personally, and very interesting. But a lot, most of my learning came through the, the breakout sessions, um, seminars that I was able to attend, and I don't know typically how detailed people are in their sharing, what's the typical norm? Sorry, I should've asked this.
Highlights of, you know...
Highlights.
Breakups that you, you felt...
Well, I wrote down, I, today I was, made sure I had them in a concise way, so I, I wrote down some of the things that I went to. The first day I got to go to a marketing and branding, um, breakout session, and I was talking about creating a unique identity, and, well done, Casey, uh, you do all the things that they were presenting, and it's remarkable to look back at our district even just five years ago and see all the great things that have been done, um, you know, like, through video and stuff, I'm like, we have those, you know, and I, I think one of the things, well, I'll talk about that, my big takeaway, so, well done. Uh, where they wanted us to tell their story, essentially, as we say, tell our story, they say, create your unique identity, so well done. Um, I went to, uh, community engagement, um, and it says partnering for student success, uh, District Two was, had some unique ideas about community engagement. Um, and then another one, the following one was, uh, the Pewaki School District, so neighbors in Wisconsin, and they did five steps to develop a successful school volunteer program, and it was really interesting, really compelling, what they did, uh, with very little money. Um, be interesting to see if any other school district could replicate it, if it was unique to their community, the community, but it was, it was really compelling, and they did a good job of presenting. Um, and then the next day I did, um, one on, uh, how to deal with negative people and to keep yourself from being negative, uh, and that's not a reflection on our board, I feel like our board is not there, um, more of just like, uh, in life, I, I feel like there was a lot of general, uh, application there, and I'll share definitely highlights from all of these with you, uh, I'll work with Don to, I just gave her a thumb drive with a whole bunch of PowerPoint. Um, uh, I went to, uh, another one called Great Dreams Need Great Teachers, and it's, uh, that was Virginia Beach Public Schools, they do a lot with teacher recognition, um, and it's about how you can use community engagement to enhance teacher morale, it's very, that kind of, that's their story, but it was, was, it was really compelling. And then I went to some other ones, uh, that I probably won't highlight, a funny one I went to was English Language Learners in Elementary Math, and it was called Increasing Student Outcomes, and I got in there, and one of the first questions they asked was, how many of you are teachers? And it was like 90% of the room, and I thought, uh-oh, I'm in the wrong place. And then they started blasting out words and acronyms that I had one of my, one window open to Google and one opened to dictionary.com, and I was like, what does that mean? Then I'm like, I think they're using hard words just to prove I shouldn't be in this room, but I did keep up. There are no notes, though, they, for teachers, they didn't give me any PowerPoint to bring back to y'all, so sorry, uh, English Language Learners Departments, uh, but it was funny to be there, and I thought, this is how students feel when they don't understand what's happening in the classroom. A lot of empathy built there on that one. Um, most of all, my overall impressions and my big ta- takeaway were that it's just fun to see a lot of people are very passionate about education and just willing to share their stories of what their struggles and successes, and, and get in front of that many people and really share that, and it was great. Um, I also got the idea that much of this was idea generation, so even as I pass on notes to the staff and administration, knowing that these are great ideas and you're already working really hard, I think I just wanna make that clear, I know that, so Superintendent Kelly, even as I pass it on to you, just knowing that these are great ideas, and, um, a lot of them are very management-oriented, not governance-oriented, um, so again, just passing on good ideas, um, and see, and see where they land, I don't wanna overburden any of you. Um, and then third, that is that we're, Heights as a school district is way ahead of the curve in so many areas. Um, it was interesting to hear what they were talking about and think, and Holla and I had lots of opportunities to chat and just like, the areas that we are ahead of the curve and the way I think we could go and probably have something to say at a conference like that was, was really impressive, and, and especially in the areas of technology integration, um, arts way ahead of the curve, um, broad curriculum, um, a really tight-knit, um, professional team of administration and teachers, um, opportunities for college credits for students, some of the things they were talking about, I was thinking, and we are so far ahead, um, how we embrace diversity and engage all of our students, I think it was, it was really great to feel encouraged even, um, about some of the, about a lot of the things that we're doing here in our schools, so, well done, all of you. And thanks again for letting me go.
You're gonna open up to questions?
Questions? Was I supposed to begin with? Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the, okay, sorry.
I look forward to your thumb drive full of PowerPoints, thank you.
Don's like, which one do you want me to include? I go, oh, I'll email you about that.
Thanks, um, for those that have been, it is always an interest and experience to, to gauge where we're at compared to others, and sometimes we're ahead, sometimes there's areas that, you know, we've had, uh, looked at opportunities to, to continue to grow here, so, um, good professional development opportunities, so I'm glad that it was, worked out well for both of you.
Yeah, it was nice to see the mountains like 40 miles away, but I could never like touch them.
It was Denver, right?
So, yeah, Denver, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks, Natty, I appreciate that. Um, next up will be our action items. First up is the adult basic education lease.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Um, last week, uh, we came and, um, we're telling you about, get the right spot up here, let's see here. Really talking about, um, adult basic education or our B, our ABE, uh, program, and our, our lease is expiring, uh, as of June 30th of, of this year, and we were, we were doing two things, we were talking with the current owners of the building that we're in, really looking at, so, see if some space we could expand. Um, we really have, we have waiting lists for some of the classes, and they're not being able to, um, being able to service all the, all the students that wanna come in, so that's a very good thing for us. Um, so we really did look at, then looked at the Northeast Business Building that is vacant right now, a new, we have a new owner in, and they're really looking for, for, um, tenants to come into that building. Um, so that's where we're looking at moving the ABE program a block down the street and going into that building. Um, along with Fridley Schools, they've been a collaborative partner with us, um, I guess, I don't know how, how long, it's, it's been ever since I know, but it's, this has been, they've been, we've been together in this program for a very long time. So we really initiated a new lease with that building owner. Um, so we, we're looking at expanded square footage, uh, based on the program demand that we have. The cost that we're looking at per square foot is actually lower than we're paying now, and especially in the first year. We really, um, because the funding kinda follows a year later, kinda like our special ed funding, we really, um, talked to them about giving, uh, uh, actually a really low price that first year, so we don't have to change how much we're paying right now, when we talk about increased square footage, and then that would build up, um, over the years after that point. Um, so we feel very good about that, where we're not gonna have to pay out any more dollars in this next year, and we'll have then funds to take care of that new square footage. Um, so that's gonna give us improved, um, improved classroom space, because actually we're, we're starting from, from scratch, it's just an open slate, so the, um, you know, director or program manager of the, has been able to say, you know, this is kinda the spaces we need, and they're, they're gonna be able to do that for us. And a other huge thing is expanded parking, and right now, there's not enough room for everybody to park, um, when classes in session. Um, so we bring this back to you, um, this evening for action. We just, we, I, I apologize that the lease wasn't in your packet last week, we just kinda, we got the updated lease, um, today, so we included that in your, in your packet tonight. Um, but we're looking for action to go ahead and initiate this lease, it's gonna take us about eight weeks to get the build out, so we're right down to the wire of, I'm getting that, well, they told me they could do it in six weeks, but I, I don't necessarily believe them, so, um, I wanna give them eight weeks to get that done, because we're gonna move into the first, first of July.
Let's start with a motion in a second, then we'll open up for discussion if we could.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Molly? Okay. Any discussion or questions? These people are kinda cruising the lease here. Molly, do you have a question?
I was just cruising through the lease, I thought. We'll obviously have somebody look over it, I know we just received it.
Yeah, just to let you know, we, we've had, um, Joel Engel, our, our legal representative, go, go through this lease, because actually the first, the first draft we have, we actually, he suggested quite a few, uh, changes, and they were, they were okay with all those changes.
And just so the public knows, we were given this in a, in our work session last week, that doesn't appear on camera, so we were able to have further discussion and ask more questions, so.
Because this lease is also signed by Fridley Public Schools, they also reviewed the lease, so it has thoroughly been gone through. We, um, suggested a few corrections, they made those corrections. We've had a very good rapport with the current, with the, the owners of the Northeast Business Building, and we feel very confident that this lease will serve the needs of our learners, and we'll be able to expand the programming that we're doing so that we can serve more adult basic ed students.
And just to clarify, this lease is for 10 years?
It is for 10 years, um, because we went to the longer term, and we went to keep the price down, otherwise they don't want that build out paid out in a lot shorter period, um, and that way, except, like I said earlier, the actual costs are gonna be less than we're paying now on a square footage basis.
And this is a self-funded program, correct?
That's correct. It, it funds itself through the student hours, student contact hours, that's why it's so important that we're able to have larger classrooms and serve more students, because that enables us to expand our programming.
Yeah, I guess just to, um, so you know, because we talk about this, uh, every year when we talk about our lease levy, um, the capital portion of the lease is part of our lease levy, um, that we do each year. So it's a very small piece of our levy, but there, the capital portion, of course, shared with Fridley, they're paying 50%, but that, that isn't in our lease levy, then the, but then the operational piece of the levy, that's paid through the funding.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Yeah, if, if I may, I guess I wanna add one more thing, I had a question, uh, last week about the building, especially on the north side where the retaining wall is, um, looking pretty poor. They actually have a site plan, um, going to the city this week, where those walls will actually be totally taken away. Um, they, they won't build that up, that whole patio piece up on top is kinda falling away, so it's all gonna be redone. Um, so as soon as that site plan is, is okay by the city, they're gonna start working on it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next up, or an action, for an action item is the solar array. Bill?
Okay, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Um, I brought this to you a couple of weeks ago, um, uh, through the Made In Minnesota rebate program, um, there's a solar program, uh, for nonprofits, um, to, could be able to participate in this, in this program. Um, again, we're here, um, to create world opportunity for every learner, and we're really, even though this doesn't save us a huge amount of money, it still is savings, um, for us as we go into the future, um, you know, for our, for our general fund, which will help us, um, you know, balance that budget on a yearly basis. So when we look at, um, our core values, we're really looking at community, looking at excellence again, and of course, collaboration with our partners on this, on this project. And of course, I'm gonna include innovation too, when we look at a solar array. Um, so it's, we were in collaboration with the state of Minnesota, uh, utility companies, which excel in this, in this situation, Ideal Energies, and of course, of ourself. And when we look at the cash flow, you know, there's no cost, um, to put these arrays on our, on our roofs at all, no, no cost. And then, once we get, uh, a few years in, then we, that's where we start really saving some money, because the savings upfront go to pay, of course, for the array, um, but there's no cost to us to put that array up at all. Um, when we look at, um, bill reduction over that 25 period, 25-year period, which they look at really, it's kinda the life of the, of the array, uh, at $444,000, which should save us about $17,000 to $18,000 on a yearly basis. So, um, feel very good about that, and, uh, I guess tonight I'm just here to ask for a motion to go ahead and go forward, uh, with this project, which would include an array on the high school and on North Park Elementary School.
Looking for a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Molly? Discussion, questions?
I feel like we used up all our questions on this two weeks ago, we really grilled ya.
Same system that's already at Columbia Academy, correct?
Yeah, as, as you can see, it looks a little different, you know, it's two years, it's, well, it's three years newer, so it looks a little different, but it's, it's the same thing.
That's not a new project to our district?
No, it's...
Bring in the, the solar panels, so...
Right, you know, the, the paperwork that we've put together, I guess I wanna just make sure you understand that too, actually, when we first did this, um, that, when we first got the first draw for, uh, Columbia Academy, that was the first year that it was, the project had started, and then we worked with Joel Engel at that time too, to make sure all that paperwork is in place, because there's some interesting, um, the way the partners are hooked together, and so he, he did a great job and really, um, put that, all that paperwork together for us. So going forward, it's all the same.
And I know you talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but very low maintenance.
Yeah, I, I, again, there's, there's no moving parts on this, it's just, it's just sunshine warming the panels and creating electricity and running it down the line, so, um, there really is nothing we have to do, if, we had a big storm or something happened where something would break, of course, insurance covers those types of things. Um, so going forward, we really don't have, uh, you know, any big maintenance pieces with it. Um, the first, the, the first half, well, I should say, for the first 12 years, all maintenance comes from, um, the, uh, ideal, um, and going, I guess we will learn more as we go, but I really don't see, when you go up now and look at the array on the roof on the, on Columbia Academy, it looks the same as the day they put up there, so I really don't see any issues in the future of, of things that we would have to work on and fix.
Wonder.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Moving on to board topics. I'll give people an opportunity if they have something for board topic, but I thought what I'd do first is just report out on our listening session from last week. We had a parent that came in, and at the school board listening session on April 18th, 2017, there was a parent who came to speak about the following topics. A policy on graduation requirements on the website, course catalog for the high school and the academy. And then there were some blank web pages regarding curriculum and graduation on the district website. Director Bennett and Director McLuhan were able to provide on the listening session evening, the link to the school board policy on graduation and the link to the course